I'm in charge tonight's book.
Oh, my God.
So call to order the Turover City Council work session for Monday, April 24th, 2023. Please rise for the collectively.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, Lisa.
Jeff Belkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Yeah.
Bonnie Schimmelous.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Halske.
He called me earlier yesterday, was not able to attend, so thus first day on the job of Vice President, I get the meeting tonight. So here we go. Number four, action items. We have one for A, authorization for placement of temporary signs directing people to parking areas for Cool City Brewing Company during West Park Street recon- reconstruction and upcoming Hardarama performance at the Community House. Recommended act- recommended action, authorized placement of the signs on a temporary basis until restoration of West Park Street is completed with timing for removal to be at discretion of city manager.
Okay, basically, this is on as an action item tonight because having a work session tonight afforded the opportunity for action. As you're aware, Central Park West is well under construction and that includes pretty extensive excavation on West Park Street, both at the south end by Seventeenth Street and at the north end at Eighteenth Street for utilities and other work there. Cool City Brewing Company was in touch last week and placed these signs that are intended, first of all, to advise people of the public parking that exists in the Community House Senior Center lot. We have had subsequent discussion, Kurt Andrews is here tonight from Cool City Brewing, about that particular sign. My only concern was during the day it creates some confusion because not the entirety of that lot is public parking, just one row. Try to put that clearly on a sign. But I, on all of these signs, I would suppose the council authorized their temporary placement until basically we have West Park restored, at least to a condition where the sign is torn up. And after Hardarama, which is the two coming weekends, it's going to bring up a lot of extra parking to the downtown area. For the public parking sign, discussed with Kurt and the business, the idea of their placing that only at 4:30 each day and leaving it there through the weekend because although it's not false, there is public parking, if you turn there, not a whole lot is public parking during the day, but after 4:30 it is. The more parking signs, and I'm sorry, I quickly pasted the same photo twice, but there are two, two signs that say more parking with an arrow pointing to the west with Cool City's logo on them. They are both on city property, not on the street right away, but behind the sidewalk, as you see there, then went a little further down. And ultimately, there is an on-site sign on Cool City's parking lot, on the brass next to Cool City's parking lot on the west side of Adams, indicating to people that that is Cool City parking. I do think this is, this is in the vein of working with a local business that's impacted by our construction activity and would recommend that the council approve this authorization for a limited temporary basis as described. And Kurt, I know if you, if you want to have any questions or wish to hear from him is, is here to address questions or concerns, am I here?
So then, okay, so you're talking about, all right, the photo that's on the left-hand side, that would go out at 4:30?
After 4:30, Monday through Friday, right? And then on Friday could stay there through the weekend because that's how the lot, the entire lot is signed.
All right, and the big concern is Hardarama?
Well, the big concern is right now there's some parking's been eliminated on West Park due to the construction. And Hardarama's going to pump a lot more people into the downtown Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the next two weekends. Honestly, I think our disruption of West Park is probably going to extend past Hardarama. That's kind of up in the air. I know Matt, you've had some discussions with the contractor about when they hope to get in and get curb report on West Park, but.
Oh, with the north end, they're hoping possibly next week or early the following, which that literally just will address the sidewalk, so to speak, by removing parking.
Okay.
So parking will be a condition on West Park at least a good month.
Okay, so I would presume that these signs could go away, A, after Hardarama, I think that's a given, given what Matt just said, but B, once West Park, at least the north half of West Park in front of Cool City is restored with curb and with the diagonal parking in place. I know at least myself and council president had heard from at least one private resident on, about these signs with some concerns some of the rest of you may have as well. But those are the subject signs.
Okay, roll call for motion.
Okay.
Okay, second by Bill. Discussion.
Council discussion.
Yeah, Jeff. Greg said, I got a couple of calls, I was surprised that I didn't get any. Said it's kind of confusing. They said these real real people that go to the community center and they said it's almost like the looking of the signs is still the same. I think that everything is Cool City parking. I told them, no, no, that's not the case, but I, because, because they're the same color and that's what everybody, that's kind of.
I, you know, I heard that concern, I understood it to be primarily about the one that says public parking because the seniors, all the seniors rightfully would say, well, you know, that's, that's our senior center parking lot, which is probably why one of them pulled the signs up and put them by a dumpster last Friday, to be retrieved by our Parks and Recreation. But I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with a, you know, we could do something with the signage on a, I don't know, tight barricade, a little horse type barricade, it's a city sign. But again, subject to those time limits, I, if it's there during the day, I guess, excuse me, if it's there after 4:30 each day, at least the public parking sign isn't there to create confusion.
I understood what they meant though because I went, I thought, I gotta see exactly what they're talking about. Went down there and I thought, yeah, I drove my car around the block and, oh, no, no, I know what it is.
And in all honesty, Jeff, I do think, and I'm not looking for council direction, I'm saying, hoping you'd see the staff discretion, I think we could use a larger, more visible sign when you come into that parking lot that makes, how do you do it in as few words as possible? Public parking after 4:30 weekdays and on weekends, otherwise, you know, public parking is limited. So, I don't know. I, I think with the time of day restriction on this, basically weeknights from 4:30 until closing time at Cool City, then Friday night through the weekend, hopefully that will eliminate some of that confusion factor. I honestly, overall, I think we could do a better job of putting out public parking in the downtown. We have some spaces behind the west side of the 1600 block of Washington. And like we talked about recently at council meetings, it's, in some respects, it's good to have people saying, we got a parking problem in some areas downtown. We haven't had that problem for a long time.
Is the public parking, is that just until Hardarama's done?
Like I thought there was, again, until restoration of West Park.
It's in parks.
Oh, parks.
So it's not like it's gonna be there for a long time?
Parking is still kind of a premium there, but what, maybe a month, I'm hearing from that. Then it's hoping to be done by the second week.
They're hoping to be substantially, especially by Memorial Day.
Yep.
Three, four items after Memorial Day.
Yeah, you know, not directly related to this, but the post office is, we've placed the new signs there. One of them needs to be backed up because they're in front of five spaces instead of four. And the post office itself is, I think they've got the signage, I don't know that it's up, looking at more signage to point people to post office parking opportunities in the five or six off-street spaces they have on the site toward the funeral on the side. I'm of the understanding, talking to the postmaster, those can also be available. After hours for public parking, it's not like federal property kickoff. I'm not sure how they'll communicate that clearly because again, that's, it's a timeshare sort of thing.
Anything else?
Could we get them here, like put them on a sidewalk or something?
Oh, please, certainly we could, could work to do that.
Because if there's people parked on the street in a role like that, I could see where that would be an issue.
Yeah, you'd have to walk away when there's, you know, vehicles parked there. Kurt, you have any thoughts on that? I know it's, it's a horse apiece, somebody could.
It doesn't matter. I'm okay with whatever you need to do to help out the client. We'll just try and make sure we direct people, plus 60% of people who come to Cool City are not from Turovers. Easily. So they don't know where to park. They're not familiar with Turovers enough to know whether the senior center parking or not. So we're just trying to navigate them into, here's our lot, way back here, as well as, you know, the public parking's open for that first row all the time, which is confusing. And the rest of it after 4:30. So that's, we, we try to place it so it's not going to be blocked, but I don't know if it's going to be blocked, to be honest with you. So I think you get it higher, right? If the public parking, the color background needs to be different color, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. It's just where, there's a place, a curb sign that's there. If you don't have a picture of that, it's probably about an 11 by 11 that the city put up. And it's, you don't see it until you turn in, and then you don't have public parking. So there's no sign that would direct anybody that you can go in there on. So that's why we put that sign there, because there is public parking in there, but it's the first row all the time. Everything else at 4:30, that's hard to communicate with the sign, so we just made it simple.
Yeah, that one, the far left sign, the city sign is there, you just can't read it. It's too small.
You have to stop and literally sit there and.
You have to be in, you have to be pulling in to read it. So whatever fix is available, we'll take it as far as directing people to park, whether they're parking to the funeral parlor, or parking to go to the post office, or senior center, or Cool City. We should help them figure out how to park.
Kurt, not, not to mind your business's business, but I wondered, especially after this came up, would there be any advantage in parking being better publicized in that lot by post office? Because it's, it's at least in line of sight if you're on that street.
There's more parking, there's more parking in the lot.
Correct, yeah. And if people are using it, that's good.
Hardarama's going to be there this weekend.
Yeah.
We worked on a deal with Hardarama to park in our parking spot for the next three days and that this weekend and next weekend, to try to help them out.
Thank you for that.
Pretty far away. So we're, we're trying to be good for the citizens too and not to say, hey, it's our lot, you can't park like this.
Hardarama volunteers and staff have been accustomed to the city reserve and the community center lot for their event for all six nights. If you see the city trucks have disappeared from Cool City's lot, that's because they have, just like they've always disappeared from the city lot for those six perform, actually for those two weeks, and been parked up in cemeteries. So that's, that's a longstanding accommodation of, Hardarama is an event, not an accommodation of Cool City, just in case anyone cooks up any theories out there.
Tracy, did you have something?
No, I, I'm one of those bad people that parks in the post office parking lot for everything. I know that, you know, it's the weekend, it's nighttime, I know nobody's at the post office, so I just park in there. I'll read the signs next time.
Okay, anything else?
Maybe a situation won't revisit in the future, but this seems to at least be a Band-Aid that's worth trying.
I appreciate that. We definitely need to address parking downtown, kind of this problem.
Right. Okay, roll call, Lisa.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelous.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Jeff Belkey.
Since my neighbors are involved in business there, I will abstain, stay consistent.
How should carry?
Good.
Thank you, thank you.
On to number five, discussion items. Report discussion on the status of active tax incremental financial districts. Recommended action, none, on formation.
Yes, I was thinking it might be useful for, for council and staff for us to walk through our existing active TIF districts around the city. Some of them are still collecting money, expending it for projects that have already been authorized, and there's not a whole lot new that's going to be happening. Some of them are awaiting final development agreements or revised development agreements, like the Eggers East and West sites. Others, we are worth keeping an eye on because we've completed certain activities that were authorized and there were more activities allowed for in those TIF project plans that as we look to next year's budget and, you know, our capital budget, maybe we ought to be keeping in mind. So that, that's sort of the purpose of this. I'll try to keep it moving along. And some of these slides are kind of text-heavy. Sorry for that, I had to take, take enough time to boil it down. But these are our active districts. The oldest among those active districts is number six, the St. Luke's School redevelopment. On each of these slides, you'll have a summary down in the lower left-hand corner. What type of TIF are they? When were they created? What's the expenditure period? So new expenditures allowed through, and then the mandatory termination date is five years after that because you've got the authorized, the period when you can make authorized outlays or commitments, contractual commitments, then you've got the last five years of the TIF's life. You can't be doing new things or making new commitments, but you can be basically paying the bills for the commitments that you have made. This one basically came onto the books back in 2000 to help with redevelopment of the old historic St. Luke's School. As Marquette Manor Senior Housing, now all we know is the St. Luke's Apartments, it funded a direct grant to the developer, $165,000. It was also a $300,000 loan from the city's housing fund and a state of Wisconsin loan. Marquette Manor has originally developed, had very limited parking, the old rectory, excuse me, no, root of the non-state convent, that's what I'm trying to, maybe got a little threat narrator for Catholic complex. The old convent next door was retained as an historic building because this was a project that benefited from historic tax credits. It was senior only, it was income qualifying senior. I think probably for all of those reasons, it struggled with high vacancy rates, and in 2010, the development went into foreclosure. US Bank foreclosed. An affiliated company took title to the property and the foreclosure wiped out the $300,000 city housing loan and the $200,000 state of Wisconsin loan. The remaining obligation to the city to, for TIF money to reimburse the upfront grant of $165,000 was repaid by the end of 2011 from the increment that it had collected. The property then sold at auction in 2013. New owner upgraded the property. They were no longer restricted to, by income. They approached the city to lift the restriction on senior-only housing, and that was addressed with an arrangement that also included the city deeding to them the convent, because the city, as part of the development, picked up the convent, which, long story short, the Turovers historical society used as one of their museums. The city didn't have any operating costs for it. But the new owners basically said, look, if we're going to have market rate units, one of the deficiencies we see on this property is the amount of parking that's available. So the city said, convent's yours essentially, and they did develop more off-street parking. You know, they seem to be doing fine. The, based on what we, we hear from the development, the units generally stayed full. I'll say over the last couple of years, I think the maintenance needs a little bit to be desired, use a little tender loving care on the exterior at least. But this TIF was successful with a couple of months in a row at helping save that building and bring about its adaptive reuse. The city did amend the project plan for TID 12, six, I'm sorry, in 2012 to let, to allow to pay. to pay for planning, engineering, legal, and admin services related to planning for the demo and redevelopment of the Hamilton and former Eggers properties. So we probably charged about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in consulting and legal fees to this TIF. That amendment didn't enlarge the boundaries of the TIF, it's always been a one-property TIF, the old school. But that did run up some expenses there, this TIF presently, going to the bottom here, has a negative fund balance projected at a negative hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars for the end of this year, and it will likely have a negative balance upon termination in 2028. That's a typo, I'm sorry. And that will need to address, maybe it'll be paid off from other city funding sources. If we don't charge ourselves any more interest for the advance on this negative balance, if, my guesstimate, with about twenty-two thousand year revenue, we'd be somewhere around fifty thousand dollars that would need to be addressed as a shortfall in this TIF. This is probably the only debt. A lot of good was done by this TIF, but the silly really bad news, no, as far as any of our existing TIFs, TID number six. We have already passed the deadline for new expenditures. Termination date is July of 2027, and as I understand it from talking with our bond council a while back, the last year that there are revenues available to pay for TIF obligations is 2028. So you can imagine, when this one went through foreclosure, the assessed value based on an income approach took a dip, it's come back up under the new ownership and fuller occupancy. But all in all, you know, you leave this building at night and see thirty-two apartments lit up over there, looks a whole lot better than a vacant lot on that side. So any questions on TID number six? Number seven, the old hospital redevelopment, that's an older TIF too, created in 2001. That was to help Rice Healthcare, or Rice Management out of Appleton, with their renovation of the old hospital, that portion of the old hospital that was turned into assisted living, the so-called Northland Lodge. The Dodgers didn't go into the old hospital, but became the Hamilton Home, the nursing home portion. That was five hundred thousand dollar pay-as-you-go with interest, and the city met those obligations quite a while back. The original project plan also provided for funding rebuilding Twenty-Fifth Street from Lincoln to Garfield, that nice little boulevard street that drains to a soil with trees in the center, that was funded through this TIF. We did amend the project plan in early 2012 to include infrastructure work within a half-mile of its boundaries. Again, didn't expand the boundaries, it was just the former hospital site, but within half a mile, and that allowed for an amendment that provided for up to, just over two-point four million dollars for reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue, Highway forty-two, and replacement of all city, the city share of that, replacement of all city utilities in the project area, and improvements to Garfield Street. Garfield, part of it was gravel, that was paved and then connected to, I think it's Pierce Street, no, it's a numbered street. Was that Thirty-Fifth that you turn into when you go into your subdivision?
Thirty-fourth.
Thirty-fourth, okay. Connected up at Thirty-fourth, and that was in large measure to have this bypass route to the Lincoln Project. This TIF right now is paying off long-term debt, clean water fund and safe drinking water fund loans that funded the underground utilities on Lincoln Avenue, that service a little over seventy-two thousand annually. And in the final year of existence, any fund balance in this TIF will be transferred to the utilities as a reserve balance for debt service on that debt. Council did amend fairly recently the project plan in 2022 to allow for this TIF to invest in a portion of the reconstruction of Seventeenth Street, the reconstruction of Lincoln, which is going on right now, and the resurfacing of Zlatnik Drive, which will be happening this year. We've got until August twentieth to make those new expenditures, and then we'll have the next five years for this fund to be accumulating revenues for the existing debt service on Lincoln Avenue Utilities and on these projects. And we need to do a final accounting, Dave and I just talked the other day, about these three most recent projects and how much debt service there is there, and what the capacity of this TIF is to cover, and we expect it will cover a portion of those. So remaining funding opportunities, nope, pretty well spoken for, for this TIF district. But again, and we know there's been little press lately about Atrium and their various operations in Wisconsin, but another property that very easily could have been a white elephant sitting vacant on the east side, that is seen continued to use, thanks, TIF. Any questions on number seven? Number eight, I know these are all kind of old news, still on the books, created TID number eight in 2002 to help redevelop the old Washington High School site. It was a developer grant reimbursement for some TIF eligible expenses of nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand put into park improvements at the new Washington Park. That was matched with three hundred thousand in grants from DNR West Foundation. This TIF assisted the school district in relocating off its administrative offices out to the new high school. You might remember way back then, the original plan was for the admin offices to stay, it's part of a redeveloped high school, well, that did happen, so this TIF did provide that assistance to the school district, and some money for city admin and legal costs. We did some initial financing, and it was basically interest only and capitalized that interest. Then after that initial three years, there were two borrowings, fifteen-year borrowing for the public improvements, and a twenty-year state trust fund loan subsequently refinanced for the developer grant, plus the interest that had rolled up on that. Basically, the borrowing for the public improvements has been paid off, and we're continuing to make payments through 2025 on borrowings associated with developer grant. Council and commission took a look at this project plan in late 2019, and again in 2020, and did an amendment to, amended the project plan in the boundaries of this district. I like to call it WC Field's nose, for those of you that are old enough to remember. The red, the bright red nose sticking into the river is the original boundaries of TID eight. We didn't amend the boundaries with the amendment, we added activities within a half-mile radius of those boundaries, as is allowed under state law. And with that, the additional expenditures that were authorized were developer grant to Riverside Foods, which we're paying off at eighty thousand dollar annual installments, an allowance for public infrastructure within half a mile of the original TIF boundaries, fifty thousand for possible remediation and demo activity at 2023 Washington Street. Turns out, we're not spending that because we successfully marketed that property for redevelopment. Admin and legal costs related to the amendments. There is also provision as financially feasible for added grants to businesses within that half-mile radius and added public infrastructure. So that TIF is pretty well spoken for. We are doing the debt service on projects on Twenty-Fourth, Twenty-Fifth, and Madison, on the underground utilities, sanitary and water. Those projects were done in 2021, and the 2022 budget, the superior in the 23, is paying for the reconstruction of tennis courts into a tennis court at Pickle Ball Sports, as you know, at Washington Park. So with that, there really isn't much room within the revenue stream from TID eight for additional activity, and we are coming up on the expenditure deadline in August of '24. But it's performed pretty well, and again, brought about the redevelopment of that side. Any questions on TID? TID number nine, a single property, again, to assist Eggers when they built their new plant, that TIF was established in 2023. It takes in a seventy-five acre site, which is a total Eggers property, an LPT Industries property, on Highway forty-two at Eggers Drive. Twenty-three million dollar project, the city committed to assist in reimbursing up to two-point-eight-eight million in TIF eligible costs, plus interest, and it's a floating rate based on Eggers cost of borrowing, they send us a letter each year. There was also seven hundred fifty thousand dollar block grant from the state, which helped with public infrastructure. I believe that was primarily Eggers Drive construction out there. The city is obligated to pay Eggers to the extent funds are available from this TIF, and again, the only revenue source in this TIF is the Eggers plant. Given the interest rate that's applied over the life of the rate that's applied over the life of the TIF, and given the valuation of the facility, which has not ratcheted up every year, but actually it's gone down some, it's today, it's valued at of nine-point four million dollars. We will not meet the entire payback to Eggers as provided for in the agreement, and we'll come up short of that. Again, the city's not obligated to reach to other TIFs to make that up, or to go to any other municipal sources. So this TIF will run its course and be closed out, we expect, with Eggers, assistance to Eggers, which was then assumed by PT, council authorized, they're assuming the benefits of the development greater. So it's on the books, it should run through budget year 2027, but we're approaching the end on this. No debt associated with it. TID number ten, on the south side, was created in 2014, and were not firm development proposals in place at that time, but it was, I like to call it kind of a cockeyed bowtie-shaped TIF. It was intended to assist with redevelopment of the Paragon site, which is that I-two-zoned parcel shown on the district map, and then with the former Hamilton Warehouse site, you remember those beautiful onset huts, it used to be out on Memorial Drive, that's the area that's shown as having at the time of this plan, office service, business district, zoning. So it was intended to help redevelop those two properties. The project plan and boundaries were amended in 2015 to include the Edgewood Terrace Apartments, that R four parcel there to the north of Seventh Street. That got added, it had come under new management, it had gone tax exempt, and the new owners in Wisconsin Housing Preservation Corp. approached. Interest rate subsidy paying years, twenty thousand a year, to be at least covered by the tax base, or tax revenue that would come from this development coming back on the tax roll. So that was kind of an interesting one, but exempt, but if it provides some TIF assistance for a, what is it, a one-point-eight million dollar redevelopment, renovation, it'll come back on the rolls. So each year, I think we just sent out payment number seven on that fifteen-year commitment. We did in 2016, had a development agree with Holy Family Memorial, that helped with development of their lakefront campus, that included some site planning and environmental studies, purchase of right-of-way from the property owner of the warehouse site for a new street, Lakefront Way, getting amazement from Canadian National Railroad, which is painful, to allow the street to cross its right-of-way, and street construction, which the city borrowed about two hundred thousand to build Lakefront Way. We weren't sure going into it if this clinic was ultimately going to be taxable or taxed. Now, this development agreement does provide for an annual payment in lieu of taxes for the first ten years, 2018 to 2017, it's twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year, it drops in half in 2028, for another ten years at least, thirteen, seven fifty per year. The original project plan did not provide for a developer grant for the Paragon building, it provided for infrastructure investment, because that was when we were first hearing talk about a water bottling plant, so if water or sewer infrastructure was needed, new pipes or a booster station for water, it would have covered that. It did provide for the possibility of direct grant to redevelop the Hamilton Warehouse site. But if you go to the next paragraph to the bottom, there, council did approve an amendment to the project plan in 2021 to add the possibility of a developer grant of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars to aid the Paragon redevelopment. That has not been committed in any way to date. The only commitment we have there contingent upon their making some major improvements is the Island Sites Grant, or if you're familiar with it. And that amendment in 2021 also at least put in the project plan, which is where you look at financial feasibility, you describe boundaries, you identify eligible expenditures, it identified an eligible expenditure contingent on financial feasibility of five hundred thousand for political elimination, helping upgrade properties to eliminate, but like possibly purchasing and demoing properties for light elimination. So right now, we saw the value increment for this TIF take hip in 2020, when the city foreclosed, took ownership of Paragon, took it off the tax rolls, so that kind of sunk our tax increment to a very modest level. And that's why I would say at least as remaining project funding opportunities in the near term, not much. This TIF has a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit balance to address, and getting, assuming Paragon was back on the tax rolls at about what Mr. Dumpke paid for, I'm not the assessor, but the assessor will determine that, that would give us twenty-five or thirty thousand in additional TIF revenue to start chewing away at that negative balance. So we've got, we've got a lot of time left on this TIF, again, it can be on the books until 2041, eighteen more years. So we'll see what happens. You know, part of that Paragon site, Mr. Dumpke's got up for sale for redevelopment, something happening there could add increment. The original plan does allow for money for investment in upgrading Roosevelt Avenue and other streets near the clinic, that was at least from a budget standpoint in the plan at five hundred thousand, the city spent about two hundred thousand on Lakefront Way. The development agreement as far as assistance to Holy Family does also provide for the city paying for special assessments that may be applicable to the Holy Family property associated with rebuilding Roosevelt. So the bad news is they'd be exempt from, as I recall, from assessments, and good news is, if there's money, it could be funded out, that portion could be funded out of TID town. And I guess regardless of where the TIF stands, we are working as staff to try to put forward Roosevelt Avenue as the top priority reconstruct for next year. I don't think we, you've got to see the numbers, but I don't think there'd be much disagreement with that in concept around the table here. Actually, we've got a meeting Thursday to start putting together a solid five-year plan for both streets and utility infrastructure, to present some public works, utilities and the full council by mid-year. So that is TID number ten on the south side. Switching over to the east side, very positive story to be told with the redevelopment TIF that is number eleven, which provided, was put on the books primarily to assist Bitten Construction with its redevelopment of vacant former St. Luke's Fisher School. City made a commitment to reimburse Bitten for twenty percent of its documented private expenses, up to a two-hundred thousand dollar max, plus five percent annual interest on the outstanding balance, so this is a pay-as-you-go TIF, city didn't do an upfront borrowing. Bitten, in April of 2019, gave the city certification and backup for total redevelopment costs that did come in just over a million dollars on the building, and we've been making annual payments that started in 2020. After this year's payment goes out, and that will probably go out this week, we'll probably have, I'm sorry, forgetting, but we'll have less than one year's worth of revenue still owed to Bitten. So I expect the city's obligation to Bitten will be covered in full as of 2024. So that will make, that'll make revenues from this district available for other activities. The only commitment we've made so far is the developer grant to Bitten. Other things that are already in the project plan for TID eleven include things like recon- include things like reconstruction of 35th Place and Jackson Street in the area of the district, reconstructing 35th Street from Lincoln Avenue to Jackson, improvements at Vietnam Veterans Park, and the potential for developer grants to assist development activity on Lincoln Avenue properties inside this TID. This one didn't do the half-mile radius thing. To say that it couldn't be addressed in a future amendment, here, if you look at the, sorry, heavy dash boundary, there is the boundary for TID 10. So it takes in the former CC Case or St. Peter Fisher School, on those R1 parcels there at Riverview Drive and 33rd. It takes in Vietnam Veterans Park, takes in the Bitten-owned former Stroud Construction property with frontage over on Lincoln Avenue, and it includes properties there on 35th Place and properties fronting on Lincoln Avenue down to 33rd Street, 33rd, and basically 33rd to the north side of the old Stroud property along Lincoln. So if anybody would come in and propose redevelopment there and make a strong case for city assistance, council would look at that. But this is a TIF that, you know, the revenues I think are on the order of $45,000 a year between property taxes and the state reimbursement for exempt personal property that we get. So there's the opportunity to do some more good things in the way of infrastructure and work at Vietnam Veterans Park. And again, Bitten certainly took a white elephant building and really made something. Pretty impressed about it.
We ran 35th Street all the way through the, I think it's a couple of blocks.
That's right, that does.
Would that open up those lots that we lose? Maybe a person could sell some lots, I don't know if that's wrong.
That's a good, you know, that's a good point, some lots there. There are some homes on the north side of 35th Street, right, fronting on 35th, I think they front on 35th Place. Like a lot of town, there's also some old landfill in that general area, about the enthusiasm.
That would go through the north, I'm talking about the block on itself, south side of 35th Street.
Had to be worth looking at if it would open up some residential development areas, more tax base.
Is that really TID number 10?
Is it? I'm sorry, number 11. I'm sorry. Yep, that's number 11. Good catch, thank you. Not enough time to devote it to proofreading today. Number 12, this is a good news TIF for certain. This TIF was created back in 2018 to help, it's a blight elimination TID, aimed at assisting redeveloping the center hardware block, which included a hardware store building that had been vacant for about five years and some adjacent residential properties. You know the story pretty much, Two Rivers Hotel, 55 Green Commonstone. Started in 2019, opened stores August of 2020, $6.3 million project. City TIF assistance, $755,000. That was money that was borrowed and provided upfront as a payment to the developer. I say upfront, it's paid in installments as construction progressed. And that was with a state trust fund loan at 4%, which has since been refinanced for a little bit lower rate. It's to be repaid with TIF revenues generated by the development. The developers do have a commitment to meet a shortfall payment if necessary. And I edited that out of here, but the development agreement, oh wait, I'm sorry, first paragraph. The development agreement in order to have sufficient funds to pay that debt service requires an annual payment of at least $65,000 in increment associated with the hotel. That's not proven to be a problem because the TIF has been generating around $100,000 a year the first two years. So it's exceeding that. The hotel's doing very well. The project plan and boundaries were amended originally. It was just a hotel site and some nearby city-owned properties. They were amended in 2021 to include properties down at the northwest corner of Washington and 12th Streets, former M&amp;M property. And the plan, project plan was amended for a possible developer grant to assist in developing that area for possible improvements in the city of High Lift Building, which we've identified as a possible visitor center. Plan has $100,000 proposed for that. Possible pedestrian safety improvements to the Washington and 12th Street intersection. More on that in a minute. And for public water access improvements along the downtown block front, say, if you're looking to do something on site and parking lot adjacent, could a portion of the riverfront be retained with city ownership or by easement for canoe and kayak access? So that's what's happening there. The primary development drove this TIF has been a great addition and is doing well. It does create some opportunities for further investment. You see there the original TIF boundaries, there's a heavy dash outline. That's just the hotel site and the city property Harborview Park, basically, across the way. The amendment in 2021 took us down along, I'm sorry, the 1400 block of Washington Street, the west, east side of the block, east side of the block. Then across the bridge, actually it includes the properties that are currently for sale on either side of the Washington Street Bridge on the west side. And the rest is shown there, including the Sophie's Business or Office Supply Computer Service property. There's some redevelopment opportunity there. And the city, the McDonald's property, excuse me, McDonald's property and a good chunk of the city-owned property that we take in, old pumping station we talked about, and the water property. Don't anybody get excited, we're not talking about the water plant out there. But those, those are areas that were addressed in the 2013 blight study. It was part of the Harbor Master Plan. So this one's worth keeping an eye on certainly. Because if revenues hold up, it would give us some funding wherewithal to address those things listed at the bottom. Redevelopment of the Washington and 12th Site, still for sale. We hope to see something happen there. It should have its own revenue stream associated with it if something happens. Possible improvements to the High Lift Building. I didn't include a slide on that, but that would be more like a million-dollar project, full building. Worth keeping an eye on, and this district could help meet, say, a matching requirement for grant money on that. Safety improvements to the Washington and 12th Street intersection. You want to give us a quick summary on that, Matt? We just talked to DOT last week and it's, it's good news, bad news.
The summary is, the review is a lot of news. As far as the bridge goes, they're still contemplating whether or not to provide us additional sidewalk space on the east side of the bridge for good pedestrian bicycle accommodations with some sort of barrier wall. We're looking for a total of 12 feet, no, 10 feet. They want us to have 12 feet with a barrier wall and two foot of space from the travel lane to the barrier wall. So they're going back and talking to people above them to find out if we can get what we want. And of course, that's all in our thoughts. The additional is we're getting new sidewalk or crosswalk accommodations across Market Drive on the south side of Lake and 12th, because DOT is deemed the north side unsafe and for handicap accessibility with existing curb ramps. So, and then we're looking at possibly adding some rapid beacons to allow walkers, especially self-bombed by a holder of the bridge, that there might be pedestrian crossing occurring.
Honestly, we're, at least speaking for myself, very happy to hear that DOT is open or supports a marked crosswalk across 421 the south side of this intersection because since the last time they did any work here, we've added the paved trail that goes in front of the library and through Lake Shore Park. So that's, that's an important, and we have the, and we have the trail to the South Breakwater, which that southerly crossing works great. Eliminating the northerly crossing, I, there's some good reason there, I gather. You understand, because of visibility for traffic southbound coming over the hump of the bridge, northbound around the corner for purr, as we've talked about. But the heck of it is, you know it very well, people are still going to cross that location. And so now, if somebody crosses there and gets injured or hurt, well, at least we can say they were jaywalking. But human nature is such that if I'm going, let's say I'm going from McDonald's to Conuts, I'm probably not, well, I of course will go south, it's all the rules. But most, no, no, most of us are still going to have a tendency to cross illegally there. And that's a perception about how visible that crossing is in advance. We also heard last week, there's some question about to make that crossing properly handicap accessible, needing to go outside the existing right-of-way on the east side of the highway so there'd be a private property acquisition issue. And wonder of wonders, the area just east of Washington along the West Wind River, the McDonald's site over into the Seagull Marina site is recognized as a possible archaeological site of significance called the, what do they call it? The Coal Pile Settlement, which was kind of bad cultural appropriation. Sea Rice Coal came and developed a site where at one time it had been reported for a large number of wigwams along that side of the river coming in. Now, I don't know if the river channel was where it is now at that time. I have no idea what didn't get obliterated by Sea Rice Coal come nearby McDonald's and Eiffel. But that's, that's another hurdle or wrinkle when it comes to design standards. So, but a very good news element there is, well, good news, bad news. DOT has indicated they would be supportive of the random rapid flashing beacons that Matt referred to, so those would be liked by the Manitowoc Library or Maritime Museum. And that, and they would be supportive of putting them on mast arms over the intersection, which would ensure help as you approach from the north and the south. The bad news is they're saying, oh, you don't have any money for that, that would be a whole expense. So again, looking at this TIF project plan, now I spirited it up. That would certainly make sense as far as some of the additional possible activities that we was there. By the way, just FYI, these discussions with DOT, they, when the resurfacing of Memorial happens in 2025, they're also planning to put a marked crosswalk at Madison and Memorial. Would mean reconfiguring the sidewalk a little bit on that, right at the south tip of the park. And again, they seem like they'd be supportive of RRFBs at that location, which a lot of people used to cross to Mariners Trail. If you ride your bike from anywhere in the center of the north side of town, Madison is a pretty common way to go, or if you use the transfer to the library. But again, city ain't no state money for it, as you would expect. Further down the road, they are also going, planning right now to put a crosswalk, a marked crosswalk at Columbus, which will mean taking on some guardrail on the lake side. And again, it'd be up to the city, but that would be a place where we could pursue some, and then probably RRFBs, something to let the traffic that's going 45, if you're lucky, 55 more likely, of pedestrian crossing. Stay tuned on that. Not saying that this TIF could take care of all of those things that when it comes maybe to those safety improvements at 12th and Lake and the drive. So that's TID number 12. Any questions on that one? TID number 13, might have known when we called it TID number 13. It was kind of due from the beginning, maybe we should have skipped that number. That was created in February 2020, intended to assist, as we all know, a new Culvers Restaurant proposed as a redevelopment project at the south corner of Washington and 22nd. We had the city have lined up a borrowing for a TIF that was at least in part an upfront grant, $250,000 upfront, $250,000 pay-as-you-go. Unfortunately, as COVID set in and some other things happened with the developers team, that project didn't proceed and it hasn't proceeded. So all I can say here is this TIF is still available as a tool to incentivize development activity, primarily in the district, which are those five blocks shown there in the center. Yet also has the ability to spend some money for other activities within a half-mile radius. And that was for, not big dollars in the TIF plan, but additional developer grants of up to $100,000 beyond what was proposed with the Culvers Project, and up to $100,000 for public infrastructure work with those latter two both within the district and that half-mile radius. So we've picked up a little bit of incremental value in this district, even though the big project didn't happen. And we've gone from having a modest negative balance for a few years to what's projected as plus $8,600 at the end of this year. So that one's on the books. Unfortunately, every year that passes, its remaining life gets shorter, but it's still up there. Questions? Number 14, number 14 is again, pretty new, created in 2021. This was after an earlier TIF, number five, that helped with some of the trouble that the Blue Moon Industrial Park had come to an end. This takes into, into its boundaries the developed properties at the industrial park. Most everything north of 310 is developed except for a couple of lots. Takes in Lake Shore Industrial and Browns and Two Rivers on the south side, and then the remainder of the city-owned acreage south of 310. It's worth noting that those two lower left, where it says I-2, those, those, that area is outside the city, outside the Two Rivers School District boundaries in the Manitowoc District. However, the Two Rivers School District sits on the joint review board for this TIF because a majority of the land area of the TIF is in the Two Rivers District. So what is this TIF on the books for? It's for basically direct grants to assist businesses. And the first business assistance was to Slayder Holdings. Where in October of 21, the city approved a $250,000 grant. And we, Elizabeth and I've had occasion to talk with one of our existing companies and a couple of prospects about possible TIF assistance. Unfortunately, haven't had anything to bring back to council yet. The other activity that's eligible under this TIF plan would be further extension of the city infrastructure, both road and utilities, south of Highway 310. That's a fairly, yeah.
Oh, I just wondered, how, how does that work with Manitowoc owning that property and whatever develops there becomes taxable, do vacant?
Manitowoc School District does, yeah. We, going back, going back a few years when we, oh my goodness, when we created TID number five, we realized, now, we went, the city and the Two Rivers School District wrote to petition the Manitowoc School District to agree to a voluntary transfer of the city industrial park to the Two Rivers School District. Manitowoc wasn't all warm to that concept. So we appealed to the State Boundary Appeals Commission, or actually it's a state body that considers these appeals. And long story short, they ultimately granted transferring into the Two Rivers School District the land that was in what we were at that point in time proposing as, as a TIF district. So everything that was in the old TIF five is shown there being, is now in the Two Rivers School District. But TIF five didn't address that lower left-hand or southwesterly portion. But TIF five didn't address that lower left-hand or southwesterly portion there that's outside of those boundaries. So right now, that's still in the Manitowoc District. Yeah, the Two Rivers did, you know, a lot of the districts around here take in a lot of rural area, but apparently historically, the Two Rivers view was to keep it, keep the district boundaries pretty tight. I'm told part of it was concerned about busing expenses back in the day. Might have cut off our nose to spite our face, but, Darla.
Yeah, can you just go back to TID thirteen for a second?
Sure.
Okay, and right now, this TID is projected to have a positive fund balance of eighty-six hundred at the end of this year. And it's just gonna grow from there, right?
Hopefully, yeah.
So you got twenty forty-one. I'm just curious, I mean, we're talking about parking downtown, and I know you and I had the conversation one time about over, the people who own this church next door, and it converted into a home, they own that parking lot.
Yeah, or actually, they, they kept it as a worship facility. They live in, they own Parsonage.
Oh, I thought they were in there. Well, anyway, they also own the parking lot right around the Washington House.
Yep, between the Washington House and Traders.
Right, and I mean, wouldn't it be worthwhile to approach them and say, we need space downtown? Because it's just sitting there empty.
We, we could, if it was a proposed purchase or legal requirements, we have to jump to the cars. How would you notice?
So would it be possible to assist us in something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it would require amending the plan because property acquisition and public parking are not activities that were anticipated. It'd help if we had a, you know, mega development project happen that would drive some revenue. I will say at least the old Unimark coming back on the tax rolls, to the extent that pays taxes, it won't be enormous, but that'll help. So hopefully, this still turns out to be the seed for something good. And, yeah, I guess the beauty of it is that half-mile radius takes in essentially the whole downtown. Gets you, gets you over past Peck and Save at the Pig, East and West, not quite to the White House Inn on the south. So this would be one to keep an eye on in that regard, but it would require amending the project plan to provide for parking.
Just a thought, because it's, it's bad, it's ardent, but it's just gonna get worse.
Yep, and honestly, that's what I was hoping for with this discussion tonight, just, you know, there are some of the TIFs that are fully committed, fully spoken for others that are more open. So something to keep an eye on. Other questions?
Didn't we discuss, we discussed that in the committee by asking them to lease that parking lot?
We did. We haven't had, we haven't done that out.
We've done it.
Was that public works? Number fifteen, this, this could have been number thirteen, I guess, too. Three Thousand Forest Avenue redevelopment. The driving force here was to assist redevelopment of former Eggers Forest Property. As you know, at one point, an Appleton area developer had a purchase contract for that property, presented the city with plans for forty-five market-rate apartments. We thought that was a great idea because Two Rivers needs market-rate apartments, and this has long been identified as a priority redevelopment site, going back to our twenty-ten comp plan. Oops, I meant to change the tense there. Throughout, the developer proposed a project, that, that ain't going forward right now. There's not an active purchase agreement by that developer. There has been some other more recent interest in the property. But as of now, I guess this is a lot like TID number thirteen. The tool is there in place. It remains a high priority redevelopment site, and that's what we have to look at until something happens.
What ultimately killed that project? I know there was issues.
My basic understanding, and this is a public-reported document, there's a recorded deed restriction against this property that has an impact on users and.
There was no way around that, or?
The title, ours I know, ours I know.
Not around it, it needs some negotiation.
There was a lot of dialogue, from what I understand, with, and that, that restriction was basically placed on the balance of the site, but granted to Dollar General when they developed what was part of the site originally. And Dollar General is not the owner of the real estate anymore, though. It's a private investor. They often sell their properties. That, that remains, maybe somebody can, can crack that nut, because this is really a primary development property. And as you know, the city had created a TIF, had negotiated the development agreement, and was cleared to borrow the money, and that all came to a halt. So that's TID fifty. TID sixteen, we're getting near the end here, also created in twenty twenty-one. This was to assist with the former Eggers East site on the downtown waterfront. The city acquired that property in twenty nineteen. Part of it, we retained for stormwater detention, retention bond, that's on the north side of the site. The remaining two point three acres is, has been marketed as a development site. We have a TIF development agreement approved by council in November with Buckon Fluence LLC. That calls for a one point eight million dollar TIF grant, half of that upfront borrowing by the city, half of it on a pay-as-you-go basis, so the life of the district, to assist a proposed thirteen million dollar slash cost estimate project on the northerly portion of that roughly two point three acre site. The developer proposes to construct a building with fifty-plus units. We've heard more recently, maybe a slightly taller building than the original concept of forested, on, on the site with an option than to purchase the balance of the site. And we, we expect to come to council with an update on that project directly from the developer at one May council meeting. There will be the need to amend the development agreement as to the timeline for finalizing design, site purchase, and developer approval of financing. I can say from a staff standpoint, we're still optimistic that things could proceed, so construction could start this year. So, that's that. Elizabeth, anything else on this one?
Not a lot.
And again, I talk about a northerly and a southerly development parcel. That two point three acres approximately is one parcel right now. But the development agreement calls for city and developer agreement. Where do you strike the line as far as dividing the two point three acres into a northerly and southerly parcel? That's gonna depend on the development site plan. It also anticipates the city continuing to own a yet-to-be-defined parcel, at least as far as its width or its distance back from the water, along the water edge there to assure public access. Maybe in the future, if all goes well, some, some things with transient docking that could be put there. Whatever happens in the outer harbor, once you're upstream of the bridge, you get a lot less wave action. Stay tuned on that one. But this project has got the potential to reintroduce some density in the downtown. Higher-density residential can drive a lot of good things in a downtown. Yep?
So they're back to building one building, or they're?
That's, that's the most recent discussion, but possibly a building with more units in it. You're right, because at one point, they, they were, they said they were evaluating the possibility of putting both buildings up at once. This was at least a conceptual rendering we just got last week, Monday, and, and Saturday. TID number seventeen, this is the last of our active TIFs right now. Created in twenty twenty-two, final approval was September of last year. To assist Milwaukee-based developers Scott Prophet Company with building a new fifty-four unit apartment building, offering affordable housing units on another priority redevelopment site, former Eggers West Plant, right across the river from downtown. We were working with the developer to finalize a development agreement that would address the five hundred thousand dollars in TIF funding assistance, all pay-as-you-go, that was allowed, that was provided for in the TIF plan that was adopted last year. It also calls for a hundred thousand dollars in TIF-funded affordable housing money. So some of the dollars that are sitting in the affordable housing fund that's built up from extending TIF districts for that project, which has a cost estimate of about thirteen million. This is another one we expect to be able to bring to council in May. This is, to some extent, a brownfield site, and there has been investors with some EPA dollars as far as grant dollars that were received by the city as far as assessing the site and what sort of measures need to be taken there. Market rate on Eggers East is hopefully affordable housing, primarily on Eggers West. So the site plan approval for this project have already been completed. The big piece here, at least from a city standpoint, is that development agreement. Questions? That's, that's really it on the TIFs. I just did want to know, I, I didn't pull the numbers from last time we looked at it, but you'll recall that cities are limited to not having more than twelve percent of total equalized value of the community tied up in TIF districts. Which if you have that twelve percent cap, you're precluded from, from amending existing TIFs or creating new ones. We're a little under six percent. So we're at less than half of our statutory cap mark. We're not really constrained by that at this point, which is, is good. Because TIF is the primary development tool that the state has and has given us. Grants are always nice. We like, we like state and federal grants. But TIF is the primarily, the primary local source funding tool. It does mean foregoing property tax revenues, and as we've talked about, I've talked with Andre and Shay last week, what really kind of stinks about it is the provision that when you retire a TIF, only half of the value is considered net new construction for purposes of levy caps. But you look around the state, where there's development happening, local units are using TIF. We can, we'll have this available in digital form with a few typos corrected if, if any of you have any questions and follow up on that stuff. Otherwise, thank you on that. The one other discussion item that we had is an update on city pursuit of funding opportunities related to work along our Lake Michigan and shoreline lines. And Elizabeth, you wanna take up the narrative on that? We got some good news fairly recently about a, a pre-application that was submitted. And we have some other funding programs where we're in play. With that, I'll shut up for a few minutes.
Well, I'll just briefly go over the funding, a group of funding sources, and there's sort of the summary of the sources that the city's been working with a consultant at StanTech and a group of others, looking at shoreline protection projects. And the, the scope of the work that they are looking at is kind of grouped into four tasks. Harbor and water treatment plant work, looking at Forgive Not Creek culvert work, Mariners Trail green infrastructure, and the final grouping is beach enhancement. So kind of diving down into that. This is originating from, excuse me, the city's harbor master plan that was done some time ago. It proceeds me and a lot of us here, and that is the harbor, I'm sorry, the, a picture from the harbor master plan. And so this project is targeting that area in yellow, looking at different ways to treat the shoreline there and protection projects within that. And as I mentioned, the, the four major task areas are looking at different ways, infrastructure ways to address and protect those areas. So the, the harbor master plan had twelve tasks related to addressing those different target groups of funding. And I'm just gonna kind of go over that, because the alphabet soup task, or I'm sorry, slide had different estimated budgets, looking over how those potential improvements can be funded. And so they put together an estimated budget that exceeds seven million dollars. However, the initial one, we're looking at some green infrastructure primarily, which would target Mariners Trail improvements. And that's a small one that is looking at tasks nine and ten. So I'll just kind of target that, which is looking at stuff along site assessment and concept design for along Mariners Trail. So looking at things that will help identify the erosion control that's happening and stormwater runoff that's happening in that area, and looking at collecting data methods to restore at that area conflicts with utilities and structure, structures around Mariners Trail. So that's about three point two miles that are along the length of that trail, and looking at two projects to do some preliminary design work. And so the, the grant application looks at getting it at thirty percent design, at seventy percent design, and then looking to get it ready for construction. So the different breakout of funding projects is looking to design and tee it up to get it implemented. So that, that is for the, I just have to refer on this as well, the Sustain Our Great Lakes Initiative, which is part of the National Fish and Wildlife funding source.
Sustain Our Great Lakes is the one, we submitted a pre-application, was that earlier this year?
Yeah, there, there was a pre-app for that, and then the city was then invited, based on the project's scope, to continue for the full application. And that's who we're working with, StanTech, to pursue that application.
There's not a match, not a hard match required, to the extent the in-site monies were already spending. If I could, there, there's planning money in there, but there's also implementation money as it would relate to green infrastructure initiatives along Mariners Trail, like maybe putting, again, I'm not gonna remember the right term, blank gardens, rain gardens, at the waysides where now you have some, most of Memorial Drive is surface drainage. And a good portion of it is right toward the lake and across the trail and across the landscaping, the lovely gardens and all that. So it would allow for some, and it's also a nice place for some demonstration projects. Here's how you manage stormwater runoff. There's also provision for some dune grass planting and stabilization in the areas where you may have noticed the last couple of winters, especially, we've got a lot of drifting sand coming out over the drive. So that could fund some planting of dune grass and maybe some other vegetation, like junipers and other things to stabilize.
Right, those are under the categories, and sorry, I was just gonna add, the beach stabilization and the pollinator gardens.
Pollinator, or pollinator.
So those are two final categories for the trail, in addition to the design components. Those are some of the prettier items that, you know, now you're getting out of the, just the designing and trying to get the money for the implementation and getting into the actual impactful components of stabilization and the pollinator gardens along Mariners Trail. So that pretty much, I mean, I, there's a lot of other funding sources, but that is kind of the stuff along Mariners Trail that we all are familiar with. Some of the things that did not look successful for this go-around was a very expensive box culvert. So that was getting up to almost a million dollars from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They did not, that was not successful this round.
That's something woodland dudes would very much like to see happen.
So that was there.
At the Spirit of the River's wayside, where Forgive Not Creek.
Forgive Not Creek.
Yeah, comes into that box culvert, and they'd like to open up more of the creek there. Maybe something as a trail bridge, which yes, would have to be expanded.
For fish passage.
And then improve it for fish passage upstream. That's not anything we're proposing to spend direct city dollars on, but to the extent that it's, you know, habitat rehabilitation that they're funding for under things like the Great Lakes Initiative, so much the better. We did, and Darla, you, you remember this, because I know you sat in on one of the presentations. The Great Lakes Saint Laurent Seaway Communities Coalition, which is a U.S.-Canadian coalition, did reach out to cities around the Great Lakes last year for possible projects involving shoreline restoration, habitat restoration. And we floated this idea of looking at our three and a half miles of shoreline along the lake, but particularly focusing on this project, which was just laid out in concept form in our twenty thirteen master plan. We've gotten good feedback on that, and we just learned last week. We don't know if we're gonna get any of it, but our project was rated very highly by that group, we're gonna get any of it, but our project was rated very highly by that group, and they have since secured a million dollars of seed money to fund four or five projects. So I reason to believe we're in the running on that. There's also some federal money that may become available to coastal management for some major shoreline restoration and habitat projects. This project, which again, really appeared back in twenty thirteen in the, in the adopted harbor master plan, is of course the frontage from the foot of Washington Street over to the South Pier along the shoreline. And this is intended, without requiring the relocation of any of the city buildings and facilities there, all it would require relocating our lovely pile of busted concrete that we render into, into gravel. And I know we've, we've made some efforts about getting that out of there, but it's really meant to place some optional structures, those stone revestments that are so, to help capture sand and build more beach there. The Corps of Engineers, as they've looked at our harbor shoaling problem, has said that the, all of their models show the primary sand movement is from south to north through that area. So it might also alleviate some of the sand transport that happens up to the harbor entry. Would create an opportunity for some shoreline habitat restoration, open up a, a new recreational area. If you, if you walk or take your bike on that very informal trail you've developed across the backside of Public Works, that's a beautiful chunk of south-facing Lake Michigan frontage, just that nobody knows it's there. So this would, is meant to build on that. It would, of course, require working with Seagull Marina, which does own the last two hundred feet of shoreline before you get to the South Pier. And I don't know at this point that we'd be talking at all about the way of spending, or the way of spending beach that is shown carved out of Seagull's property. I think they'd get kind of excited about that. But if we now have the Corps of Engineers engaging on things like possibly extending the South Breakwater to, for a dog leg that would prevent some of the sand transport and reduce wave action, it seems this is the time to at least be talking about this. That and budget showdown notwithstanding of the debt ceiling, there's quite a lot of money out there right now for Great Lakes restoration activities. This captured the interest. It would also, like I say, really add to our, our park offerings in that area along the harbor. So not committing the city on anything at this point, but just wanted to let you know, just based on some very recent developments, it looks like there's some good funding opportunities that we'd be smart to be personal. Questions? That's all I have on that, Mr. Vice President.
Uh, onto number six, invitation to Plan Tourism Week event and Explore Two Rivers kickoff.
This is a verbal invitation at this point, but maybe, Brian, would you like to speak to the activity?
Sure, absolutely.
Brian Dean, our Stevens Tourism Director, for those who are watching on TV especially.
That's great for you to listen to. That verbal invitation, which I'm about to give, you will be coming twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours, you will show up in your invoices as well to all of you. Make a long story short, on May eleventh at five thirty PM at Hamilton Wood Type Museum, the product of your labors and the labors of the city will come to fruition as we launch officially Two Rivers' first tourism agency, its first individual effort to promote the city's tourism franchise, Explore Two Rivers, and happens to coincide with National Tourism Week, and you will have quite the event. We'll be introducing our board and launching some new video footage and a little bit of efficient statement as well. Of course, there's going to be some hors d'oeuvres and live patients provided as well.
Wood Type Museum holds a license, and they can take care of that.
Yes.
They won't be making our Tourism Director purvey.
So in some, after our little battle here, just the last several weeks, getting to know the community's tourism stakeholders, we are ready, we're gonna go, and our bylaws in place, and our board in the final stages of, of, of development, and look forward to seeing you all there on the eleventh. Thank you.
We, we got an invitation from our partners in Manitowoc to their event earlier in the week. They, along with a cast of thousands, will be invited to this council TRBA membership, Main Street membership, just about everybody we can think of, so.
Right, we'll be inviting the local civic organizations from Wauri and Kiwanis, of course, our business organizations, TRBA, Main Street, and so forth. And of course, one of our central messages is one of the singleness of purpose is promoting Two Rivers as a tourism destination, but always in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration with our neighbors, either county and elsewhere. And so they will be joining us as well, and should be a very well-attended group of stakeholders.
And Wood Type thinks for a great venue for events like that, so if at all possible, love to see you there showing support for our tourism efforts, which are really ramping up. I don't know, I don't know that he knows offhand, but how many folks, Brian, it's about, in its first few weeks on the job, but it's, it's been a concerted effort.
I, I don't have it quantified, but I can tell you that, at my estimate is I've had probably upwards of sixty to seventy meetings and followed through and so forth. So it's been, it's been a busy, but a very productive several, several weeks, almost a month now, well, a year and a month now. And I think we really, the city is already laid foundation for its tourism franchise. I think we're ready to coalesce around this project and really make, uh, very big an impact.
Very good, thank you. Council, that's all we have for the season.
Then I'll keep for motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Just a second. Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Josh Carey, have a good night.